Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Abida Springs Town Council meeting on Tuesday, October the 21st. At on 2025, it is 6:03. I apologize for our lateness, but we will go ahead and start the meeting. I will be doing the invocation, and Alderman Boudreau will be doing the Pledge of Allegiance. If you would silence your phones, please, and stand for the prayer. Lord Christ, when you came among us, you proclaimed the kingdom of God in villages, towns, and lonely places. Grant that your presence and power may be known throughout this land. Have mercy on all of us who live and work in rural areas, especially Abida Springs, and grant that all people of our nation may give thanks to you for food and drink and other bodily necessities of life. Respect those who labor to produce them, and honor the land and the water from which these good things come. All this we ask in your holy name. Amen.
Amen.
The flag of the United States of America and through the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alrighty. Mayor's announcements. First off, I would like to tell you that the mayor is mending slowly but surely. He is moving about the House. He is working independently now on his own regiment of exercise. He is not outside yet, but we're working towards that goal. But he wishes everyone here their his best, and we'll go from there. Taylor?
He did get on the street today. He made it to the end of the road and back. I saw him right before the meeting.
Well, there you go. He's out in the fresh air, and I'm sure Therese is very excited about that. So, Mayor's announcements. Halloween registration. I'm going to turn that over to Angie and Taylor about Halloween for this year.
So, we still have registration open for we still have registration open for trunk-or-treat if you want to be part of trunk-or-treat down at the town hall. We'll have the fire truck down here. Trinity will be serving food. The cafe is going to be a part of it. We'll have KAB set up in the community garden. We have, what is it, six lights that'll be that'll light up Level Street and the park. We'll have games, the haunted house, the Abida stumps at the park.
The belly dancers.
The belly dancers are performing. What else?
KAB. We'll do their Mad Dentist at the community garden.
Yep.
Lots of fun.
Yeah, lots of fun, lots of candy.
Yeah.
Yep.
We will have, actually, this year, we'll have a few food vendors. We will have the traditional free hot dogs, and Trinity will do their jambalaya, and then we have some other vendors that are going to sell just a couple of food vendors.
Some sweets, some coffee. We have pasta lita and gumbo.
So, everything's outside of the building?
Yes.
At, you know, the community garden and at the park. There's nothing inside town hall?
There's nothing inside town hall. We actually have an event the very next morning that will be already set up in here. So, um, yeah, everything will be up and down Level Street and in the park. So, come on out. It'll be fun.
Okay.
And don't forget to register your home, too. If you're on Level Street or one of the houses around the route that's going to be closed, register online through Facebook.
And we'll make sure we get you guys put on that map.
Yep.
Alrighty, well, thank you. Also, with that being said, I would like to give out a big thank you to Equipment Share and Sunbelt for providing lighting for the event. Also, I want to let everyone know that we are doing sidewalk repairs right now, both on Level and Main, to correct some of the more dangerous spots that have popped up because of the trees. So, that should be complete before before, excuse me, not Thanksgiving, we're not there yet, Halloween. Alrighty. Also, this coming weekend, on Saturday, we're going to have the Fountain Blue High School Homecoming Parade, and that's going to be Saturday at noon. It's going to start at the end of Level and go all the way down to the park, where they will have a pep rally in the park for for the homecoming. So, everybody line the street and have some fun.
So, it starts at the elementary school and ends at the park?
Yes.
Okay.
That is correct. Also, Cleco is cutting electrical line rightaways right now with tree trimming, and I have a little something I'd like to say about that. Cleco is beginning an accelerated tree trimming effort across Abida Springs to improve electrical reliability and reduce storm-related damage outages. While the town supports responsible utility maintenance, we are equally committed to protecting our tree canopy, preserving the character of our community, and ensuring proper communication with residents. Tree work must follow local ordinances, including permits for protected trees and respect for private property. We are working to ensure this process is done transparently, respectfully, and in partnership with our community. If you have concerns or witness work being done without proper care, please contact Town Hall or the Town Marshal immediately, and we will come out and we will assess the situation and take care of it for you. So, just bear that in mind. But they will be cutting here in the they've already started. I was down Sixth Street, and they had already cut Sixth Street. So, just to let you know, they're out there doing their work. Let's see here. Now, we move to public hearings. This particular instrument was introduced on September the 23rd and, again, was discussed at the last meeting. This is Instrument 2025-09-002. An ordinance of the Board of Aldermen of the Town of Abida Springs amending Ordinance 551, an operating budget of revenue and expenditures for the year beginning January the 1st, 2025, and ending December 31st, 2025. This is only to amend the budget to get us through the last two months of the year. So, anybody in the public have anything that you would like to ask or have any comments towards this? Stuart, I'm looking at you because you're on the front row. You good?
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay. Anybody on the council?
I'll say something about it. I don't know. I guess we need this. I don't know. But just two more months to go. Looks like we've already spent all the money, really. So, I don't know.
I really can believe if you'll just give us a minute. We have some amendments to the amendment?
Yes.
Can we talk about that?
Yeah.
Okay.
But just to remind everyone that there are two funds, and we've mentioned this numerous times, that need this amendment. So, Park and Racks and DAT need this amendment to follow the LA guidelines. So, even if we want to go back and scratch everything else, we do have to consider the amendments to Park and Rack and DAT.
Yeah, it's required by law.
Yes, ma'am.
We are closer now than the last three or four years to really getting our finances straight, worked through. I know Da'nette and LeAnn have been working tirelessly for the last few months, but bringing on DHHM with Michelle has just been a godsend. They've done a phenomenal job, you know, and this board is ultimately responsible for our budget. We're the Congress. Dan's the mayor. He's the president. You know, and after we found out the $51,000 from, what, two administrations ago, three from the cemetery, you know, I just want to make sure when we are succeeded by other board members, that this board has done everything they possibly can to make sure that every dollar is accounted for, that it's going in the right places. It's really good for this board to understand the expenses, the expenditures and the revenues, but more importantly, to understand the revenues and how are they to be disseminated, if they're obligated, dedicated, et cetera. So, I will continue to make sure that we do everything financially with high integrity, and it probably frustrates some people, but we got to make sure that we do this right. And I just want to commend you guys for doing the work you've done. LeAnn and Da'nette, I asked y'all, when y'all took those roles, you sure it wasn't too overwhelming, but thank you for doing what you're doing. We're almost there. I'm hoping by the end of 2025, we beat a metal lawsuits for resolved and other lawsuits or things that Credit Card issued hopefully will be resolved shortly. So, it's been a long few years. I said then, and I'll reiterate again, it was painful. It was going to be painful, and it has been exhausting for us to get to this point. But we're almost there, and kudos to those guys that have really put forth the effort to identify where the monies come from, where the monies go, and how they're dedicated.
Right. Okay. Anybody else on the council? All right, we have closed the public hearing. All right, I'm going to call for any agenda fund agenda modifications.
None.
Hearing none, I'm going to move forward with the acceptance of the 2023, excuse me, September 23rd, 2025 Town Council meeting minutes.
So, may you accept.
First by Alderman Sossi, second by Alderman Contoys. Okay. Any vote? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Alrighty. New business. Consideration of resolution to accept an act of donation of a parcel of land in the Town of Abida Springs. All right, we have a family who has donated before, and this is another act of donation from them. It's Lot 1A and Square 24, being a resubdivision of lots 1 and 2 of Southeast Division of the Town of Abida Springs. It's on Danny Park Road. It encompasses .33 acres. It has water running through it. It will it'll be used for our floodplain management and drainage.
I'm sorry, but where's Danny Park?
Danny Park.
I've been, no, I mean, I've been on it before. I just can't remember where it is.
It's between the fire department and the school.
That little piece of ground between the fire department.
That's where the gate was that we were trying to close off.
Right, that's it. That's it. And so, it's the lot right there.
Which portion is it?
Lot 1A, Square 24.
If you're going in past the fire department, right or left?
It's on the right-hand side.
On the right, right side.
Uh, it's at the corner of Danny Park and Andrew Street.
Okay.
So, it's right there. So, all I need is a a motion to.
I'll make a motion to accept the donation.
Okay, we have a first?
A second that. I think it's a great idea.
We have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, excuse me. Does anyone have anything to say about the donation?
Critical drainage.
So, we're all good? Okay, Stuart. I don't think we have I don't think we have Kerry.
Turn that on. You can use this microphone.
No, I just want to say I think it's a good idea, too. So, I mean, you got to have some public account, but.
All right, well, good.
I think that whenever the town gets a chance to accept some potential green space, that it should jump at it, because otherwise, who knows what will happen.
It's going to be wet space.
Yeah.
It'll be green, too.
A nice habitat. A nice.
It's bluish green.
Yeah, teal.
There you go. It's good.
Wood ducks.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Boudreau, you were going to say something?
No.
Okay. So, I have a first and a second. Do I need a roll call vote on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The donation is accepted.
I guess I was going to say, don't turn down free stuff.
That's right. There you go. All right.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you to the family who donated.
Thank you. Thank you to the family that donated. Alrighty. We have a on here discussion of drainage issues on A Bear Road and possible related wildlife wildlife management solutions. Mr. Boudreau.
Okay, that's me. A couple of guys I talked to about the flooding at the end of A Bear Road, and they said, well, it's the beavers out there. I said, beavers? He said, yeah, there's beavers building dams, and they build it across all the drainage culverts, you know. So, I called up this guy, Fred Penton, and he has a company called Animal Roundup. And he doesn't kill them. He just relocates these. So, he catches these things, and he relocates them, and then we could tear down a dam and open the ditches and everything. It might relieve a lot of that flooding, because whenever I go to these planning and zoning meetings, that's one of the main things that comes up is the flooding, every water flooding. So, we find out that maybe this is good, because they said, well, it didn't used to do it before they had the meadows, and now the meadows is there, and it's causing. Well, I think probably those beavers got displaced from that acreage that was cleared, and they moved over to these culverts over here. So, and so, once we get these animals removed, we could then dig the ditches out and break the dams down, and maybe we'd do some better drainage. So, he's very cheap.
Well, good.
He charges like in the hundreds of dollars, and it's not like some kind of big financial thing.
Like a.
I think we could do it just with a general fund, you know, we could.
What is it, like $150, $180 to go out inspection and?
$180 something to come out the first time, look it over and plan it, and then he's got to come out two or three times. He said every other time he comes out, it's about $45.
Okay.
So, it'd be crazy not to do it, really.
All right.
So, I don't know what the administration thinks about that.
I know you'd spoken to Da'nette, and she has reached out for the gentleman, and we're waiting to hear back from him.
Yeah, we will be reaching out.
We looked at the the site here, and we I think we may have located one of the beaver ditches. It's directly across from the meadow, so your statement about being displaced could could really be what happened. The the issue we're going to have to look at and after he looks at it is it looks like it may be on private property. So, we have the the person's name, the two people that have parcels right there that we can contact. So, we're just going to, first off, we're just going to find out, you know, from your your gentleman, where they're located, and and if they're located on somebody's private property, then we'll just have to contact them.
Can you guys see this? Where, I mean, this is where a lot of the water is. This is the 2025 image along both sides of the highway. The meadows is on the left side. I guess that's the east side.
Yes.
It went out a little bit right here.
Right in there. Can you see it?
Running around to see.
You can see it.
It might look like it looks like there might be a little obstruction right here. Did you drop down there?
I went, but it was real wet the day I went and saw it. I got a.
It looks like it could be a little blockage right here. Do you see this?
It looks like it to him.
But that would be.
On the timber there. Mr. Kevin David Gonzalez. He owns five acres, and that's it's either on Mr. Gonzalez's land or Joe Janowski, who has a three-acre parcel that's right next to him. And so, we're we're trying to your gentleman will be able to locate it and show us where it is, and then we can contact either one, you know, one or the other.
I might tell you this. He's recommended by Wildlife and Fisheries.
Okay.
So.
That's great.
You know, he can he can go out there and do what he ever whatever he has to do as far as the state is concerned to move those animals.
Okay.
And so, you can tell that to the property owners.
Okay, well, if it's if it's under the state, then we're good to go.
Alderman Boudreau, is it a one-time deal where he comes out per site, or will he search for other sites as well in general?
He does come back and check it.
Like, if that's one site, and we have another drainage ditch 100 yards away, will he do that at the same time?
Yeah, he'll come and look at it.
Okay.
And.
If he could look at that drainage in that area, because that seems to be located in that particular area.
Right.
If there's two, then we will move the cousins as well.
He said he generally he'll come and get the adults, and then if if one or two of the little babies get away, they're usually going to come back, you know, so do a second trip back to try to catch them and.
Okay.
Get them out of there, too. So.
Okay.
But, man, it couldn't be cheaper. It could be beneficial and stop all that drain that flooding problem.
One thing I'll tell you, I was with LeAnn, and we we did a comparison of 2019 versus today. And at the end of the detention pond there, there are two culverts. One goes down the east side of A Bear Road, and the other one crosses over to the east side of the road, and the east side of the road is where the problem is occurring, and that's where it looks like the beavers are.
Okay.
Wait, cross it over to the west.
If you're looking right here, right, to your right is the east, because you're going towards 36.
She just said that the meadows is to the left.
It's it's, yeah, if you're.
Is that heading south, or is that heading north?
You're heading south, so.
The east would be to the left.
They'll determine where the beavers.
Well, they're out there.
We don't have to figure it out tonight.
Well, you know, south.
East.
You know, we can't go and tell them to move to the southwest side, because it's not going to happen. So, we'll just go find them, and we'll we'll relocate them to a nice area away from here.
She's going to tell them to get a cop.
That's right. Okay. Now that that's been said, we all good?
Good.
All right.
We need to discuss funding that?
No, I think that would be general.
You know, considering that's a few hundred dollars, it'll probably, that's public work, so that's a drainage issue.
It's a drainage issue.
Perfect.
I would hope so.
Okay, now we go to old business, which is the consideration of the amendment and the adoption as amended of Instrument 2025-009, zero, yeah, 002, I'm sorry. So, I'm going to let Da'nette go over the instrument. On the second page is where the amendment to the amendment is located. So, if y'all.
Second page.
It's highlighted in red.
Third page.
Third page, I'm sorry.
So, after our discussions at the prior meeting, we we discussed, and it was determined that the money that is needed to pay off the 2004 debt and to start the Abida East Sewer Force Main design and the gas line extension all has to be appropriated in an ordinance. So, what we've done with the original amended budget ordinance that we gave to y'all at prior meetings is we have added the funding on Line 31, which would be funding from the Lamp Fund. And then, after hearing a lot of discussion about having the entire grant and expenditure for the wastewater treatment plant in the 2025 budget, we went ahead and did our best estimation of what those revenues and expenditures will be for that project. So, you'll see a reduction on Line 32. That reduction will include the remaining expenditures we are expecting in 2025 on the wastewater treatment plant, the Abida Springs, I'm sorry, the BETA East.
That's the revenue. 32 is the revenue.
Oh, I'm sorry. So, that would be the grant revenue coming in. And then you would go down into the expenditures. Line 41 gives us that authorization to pay off that debt. And Line 42 is the revised expenditures for the wastewater treatment plant, along with the expected Abida East Sewer Force Main design and the gas line extension cost.
Da'nette, the 2025 year-end expenses for the sewer plant, what percentage? We had $5 million, right?
Six.
In the grant?
Six.
We had $6 million in the grant.
Over six.
Um, we anticipate May timeframe, 2026. So, we'll spend about less than half of the $6,000 this year and the remainder of it in 2026?
Yes, so just slightly less than half.
Right.
We expect to have expended by the end of the year. And then the remainder of that will be most probably billed to us as they finish the project up in the first half of 2026.
That was estimated by Fairway. John Catalonato anticipated where he thought Lemoine Contracting would be with the wastewater treatment plant construction project. We did add $200,000 to that estimate in the event that one of those invoices might come in at the very end of the year, so that we wouldn't have to come back to you. But leaving $6 million in there for the wastewater treatment plant in 2025 was way more than what we could ever hope to do within this year. So, that had to be divided between this year and next year's budget.
So, that is the extent of the amendments that have been added to the original budget amendment ordinance.
Does the grant pay for any engineering, John Catalonato?
No.
No, sir.
Most of that funding comes from the existing series 2017 DEQ loan funding that we used for the CIPP and the lift station rehabilitation. We value engineered those projects so that we would be able to do that most cost-effectively, and we were able to cover the engineering for the wastewater treatment plant through that DEQ loan.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? All right, then, I'm going to.
One second.
Yes.
We're going to make a motion to adopt the ordinance, then make a motion to amend it if there's going to be an amended.
Okay.
So, just to get it in the position.
In the position.
We have to take action on it.
All right. Do I have a?
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt.
So many.
Second.
You have a first and a second? Do we need a roll call on this?
No.
All in favor?
Wait, no, no, no.
Whoa, whoa, whoa. There's an amendment, I understand, that you're going to want to adopt.
Yes.
So, someone needs to propose the amendment.
Motion to adopt the amendment to the budget.
Second.
You got a first and a second?
And then open that up for discussion.
All right.
Amendment.
The amendment. Does anyone have any questions? Stuart?
Nothing longer detailed here. I just want to register my annual objection to the entire process. Budgets are for planning for the future, and just I know the state mandates it, but to me, it seems an exercise in pointlessness to amend the budget after you've already spent the money. I mean, the accountants are going to see whether you spent the money right or not at the end, but and the budget is for planning. So, this part, I just object to it on general principle. So, go ahead and vote how you want.
Stuart, we are also addressing what we anticipate we have to spend in addition, such as the gas line extension. We have not incurred those expenses. We expect to incur those expenses in between now and the end of the year. So, this budget amendment addresses trends and what it looks like is going to happen before the end of the year. So, we are anticipating in advance some of the additional expenses or reductions in revenue that we're going to have before the end of the year.
Okay. Now, we can.
Yeah, let me just clarify that the.
Give me some direction.
Circulated. Everyone has a copy. It's in writing.
It's in writing. Everybody's looking at it. It's right here. Okay.
If someone wants to make a motion to call a question on it.
A motion to call a question.
On the amendment.
On the amendment.
On the amendment to the amendment.
So, now you need a vote.
And we're voting on the amendment?
Yes.
Yes. The amendment or the amendment to the amendment?
We're voting on the amendment to the amendment.
To the ordinance, which amends the budget.
Yes.
It's amended.
It's amended.
Yes. It's.
All together, man.
It's redundant. It's very.
Last time we had to vote to vote to this.
Yeah, it's very redundant.
So, he called the question. So, now you will need a roll call vote for that.
The question has been called.
Yeah, I don't think we need it for that. When we adopt it, we'll need a roll call.
Okay, so just all in favor.
All right. The question's been called.
All in favor.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
I don't, I'm not real comfortable with all this. I really am not. I had a lot of line item changes and stuff, and now we're going to amend the amendment. I don't I'm just really not comfortable with this.
All right, so you're voting yea or nay?
Nay.
Okay, so we have
Two, two.
Two, two, I vote yea.
Mayor can't vote.
Oh, Alderman Sausie, you voted nay?
Nay.
On the amendment?
It's the amendment to the amendment.
Yes, um, this is an ordinance, correct?
Yes. Okay, wait, let me get that, hold on just a second. Okay.
And I'm excluded from making the tiebreaker?
Correct, that's the mayor.
You can tie break.
You can tie break, you can, you can either vote or
No, an amendment or an ordinance, the mayor cannot vote.
He's not the mayor.
Need a resolution.
Mayor pro temp.
We're, we're talking to the attorney.
No, you have five, you know, you have your five members, though, he can either vote to break the tie or he can vote on the, on the proposal, but he certainly can break the tie.
But the mayor can't vote, correct?
On an ordinance.
The mayor cannot break the tie in an ordinance or an amendment, only in a resolution.
He's the attorney.
Okay, I'm just telling him.
Well, he's the attorney, then I vote
Looked that up, but
I, I vote to break the tie.
In favor?
I'm in favor. We're not, we're not gonna go through this exchange every year of, of stops that, we're voting for the last two months of the year, for God's sakes. I mean, this, it, I'm with you, Stewie. All right, so where do we go now?
Well, I do have a question before we call whatever the vote is. Well
Go ahead, please.
He's looking it up, I think we should take the time to look it up, cause I don't wanna make a vote. And then we decided after the fact that it didn't count because we're in a situation that is not normal for us with the mayor not here and the pro temp acting as the mayor, so.
Okay.
I'm asking for the attorney's opinion on that.
Okay, you're gonna have to give me a moment.
That's fine.
So I just wanna remind uh, the alderman that without this ordinance, our amended ordinance, however we're gonna call it, we will not be able to proceed with either the payoff of the two thousand and four bond, the Abida East Sewer Force Main, or the gas line extension. We do not have monies appropriated in the budget for those projects. And so therefore they will stay until we have that ordinance that allows us to proceed with those projects and the funding for those projects.
I, I would also like to note that we have a contractual obligation in our development agreement with the Abida Meadows that compels us to complete the gas line extension within thirty days of their approval. So if they are approved at the planning and zoning meeting on October thirtieth, we'll have till November thirtieth to complete the gas line extension.
Is it legitimate to open it back up to discussion to find out if there's anything that that would change what's going on or we have to wait until you decide whether or not this vote is legit?
Can we, can we have a discussion as to what the administration could bring forward to the alderman that they would approve so that we could proceed uh, with these items that are imperative for us to get done before the end of the year? And also to make sure that we are complying with LLA guidelines and we are amending the funds that are out of the five percent compliance?
Yeah.
So is there anything that
One, one second, Mr. Dino. I found that in a Louisiana municipality operating under the Lawson Act, a tie vote on an ordinance or amendment means the measure fails because it has not received the required majority. The mayor is not permitted to cast a tie-breaking vote for an ordinance.
But he's not the mayor.
He's functioning as the mayor.
Yeah, but I, I, let me take a look at, I believe there's a, there's a
Provision.
Yeah, either Attorney General's opinion or case that says that the mayor pro temp doesn't give up his right to vote doesn't count. So whereas the mayor must be able to do it.
So while that is going on, again, I will ask the question, is there anything that the administration can put forward to the alderman that would grant approval for us to use the funding that is needed for the projects that were previously mentioned?
Or the objection to the amendment, what, what is the objection to the amendment itself? Because the amendment just addresses those changes to the line item of that instrument that we discussed, which is taking money from the Lamp account to fund those projects to um, do the design for the Sewer Force Main, the gas line extension, and the payoff of the two thousand and four bond.
We have nothing that
Apparently not, they're hell bent on not, not voting for any budgets, apparently.
So we will continue on with the existing twenty twenty-five budget through the end of the year, we all understand that.
Apparently.
And no funds are appropriated for any of the projects that were mentioned, that was discussed. And it was under our impression that was agreeable to members of the council from our last meeting.
Are, is there any response from council, I'm just curious myself?
I see no problem with, with what they're, what they're doing here. It, I would, discussed it, we've discussed it at length, we just, we decided that we were gonna
We cannot let the, we cannot let perfect be the enemy of progress.
Thank you. You're more worried about me voting as opposed to what we're trying to pass?
I'm not worried about you voting.
Okay.
You can vote as mayor pro temp, functioning as mayor, then you can vote.
That's fine, what, what is the problem with the, the amendment?
I think it needs some more adjustments.
Alderman Sausie, can you, can you verify or, or identify any adjustments that you're looking for so that we can figure out whether or not we can get this passed? Because we're in a time crunch to also get to twenty twenty-six budget and, you know, with the Meadows potentially coming up for a vote on October thirtieth, that puts us in a difficult situation, so I'm just trying to figure out what is it that can be done
Tonight?
Um, tonight or expediently to make this palatable.
I don't, I don't have anything else to say, then I'm gonna continue to review it.
Okay. Hold down, big as it
So I'll just take this opportunity to update everyone on the twenty twenty-six budget. Hopefully, we will soon be able to resolve what we're gonna do with the twenty twenty-five budget. But going forward, we do plan to have a proposed twenty twenty-six budget to the council prior to the November, I think it's the November fourth? No? But there has been some questions, yeah, there's been some questions um, as to whether or not current contracts and renewals for twenty twenty-six are being looked at and I can only assure you that I am going over every contract and renewal, uh, any options we have for twenty twenty-six. Um, anything that may come up, first of the year, mid-year, last year, it doesn't matter. All of those are being reviewed and they will be considered when the twenty twenty-six budget is put forward to everyone. Um, but there is a adoption of the twenty twenty-six budget that needs to occur prior to December sixteenth or for the second year in a row, we will be out of compliance with LLA guidelines. If anyone has any questions on the twenty twenty-six budget, maybe we can discuss that through recess.
Can't discuss anything during recess.
Yeah.
Well, we're waiting for a rule.
Well, we still have to see what
We're, we're waiting on clarification.
Well, we were discussing twenty twenty-six. I suggest we take a ten-minute recess. Okay, all right.
How about law and refresh?
It is six forty-four, uh, we'll reconvene, I'll just say we'll call it seven o'clock.
But, yeah, it's just, uh, would not be proper, but it can do that, at least counts.
Yeah.
I'd say if you just sit on there for a bit. Oh, I know where they are. We 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 did. That's what he had. Root and I were saying. There were. This is defined from all of the people one of all of the search for trying to be right. The president's free. I've seen it before. And I heard Northwood, yeah, is considered off that. I've seen the existence of laws. And lots of dead. Sometimes they're definitely. Yeah, I thought. This is a problem there. That's right. That's what. So maybe others don't. Uh, yeah, but it's not confused. It says that they deny that the marriage college has a cycle. That's right. That's right. But he did give up his rights to vote. He didn't go twice. The authorities said he came to fight. He came pretty tight and voted right. Yeah, I think.
China. All right. How are you tonight? Why don't I tell you, Earl? I want you to surprise us and help us. Black.
That's hard.
I've never seen anything like it. So. You know, it's really funny. No, you probably really. I know, but when you got. Very strong opinions.
I know.
I have.
I can. Or did you say?
That's what I said.
Well, it says. They voted all, but they denied being the marriage college has a cycle. It's simply not the whole.
I got you. Oh, I bet. I personally like the air.
Have you? You know.
Oh, stop. Or they've just been running all the.
All right. I call this meeting back to order. Uh, when we left the meeting, there was a tie. Two for and two against. As uh an alderman, I am casting a vote of yea. So the tie is broken, then the amendment to the amendment passes. Is that correct?
Correct.
All right.
Based on legal.
Based on legal opinion. Okay.
I need consideration of a motion to adopt as amended.
I need to have a motion to adopt as amended.
So moved to adopt as amended.
Second.
Second. We have a first and a second.
Roll call.
Roll call vote. Oh, excuse me. Uh, does the does the assembly gathered have anything to say?
He left. He left.
Does the assembly gathered have any any comments?
No.
The assembly is quiet. So we will do a roll call vote. Leann?
Alderman Bedrew?
I'm still on that.
Alderman Fronthorse?
Yay.
Alderman Patterson?
Yay.
Alderman Saucy?
Nay.
Alderman Tomplay?
Yay.
Okay, it passes. The amendment to the amendment passes. All right, we now uh go to open and adjournment. Uh, I know that you, I'm sure you have something to say.
That I just need some volunteers. That, of course, um.
Tonight?
No.
Okay.
No, not tonight. That on Saturday, the um Fountain Blue High School pep rally and parade is happening, and I'm sorry I came in late, so I didn't hear the announcement, um, but that um we are putting out trash cans and recycling cans all along the parade route on Saturday. That we think that we're going to be at the end of the parade. We'll pick up whatever litter we can get without obstructing traffic on Saturday, you know, being at the end of the parade. Then on Monday morning, that we're going out with um some of our volunteers and the Montessori kids on Level Street. We're gonna keep them on the sidewalk side. I am looking for some adults that can go to the non-sidewalk side of Level Street. Monday morning, 9:00 a.m., we're gonna meet at the Montessori school, but it would be helpful if we had some adults that could get over on the side of Level Street that doesn't have a sidewalk and help us walk that and pick up litter there. That Jenny is going to be at the trailhead picking up litter from the pep rally on Monday.
I can help you Monday.
Perfect. I love it. That we need a few more, but one is a good thing. I'll take it with this crowd, you know, that yes. Excuse me? Monday, 9:00 a.m., we're gonna meet at the in front of the Montessori school, right over here on Level Street, you know, the the one that's got the bigger kids in it. So 9:00 a.m. Monday, yeah, and we'll see y'all on Saturday at the parade. Yeah, thank you.
I'll I'll join you as well.
Oh, wonderful. All right, I might stay a little longer. Do I have any more people that might wanna come out and help then? Anyway, and that Deputy Deputy Mike, you're always the best, you know, in terms of uh watching out after us, you know, when we are out there. So if you're gonna be on duty.
Might go to the sale of my house on the 27th. Is that Monday?
The 27th.
Yes.
Okay, all right.
But I'll be there if I don't have to go to that.
I got it. Yo, all I know is that you always take really good care of us, so. All right, thank you.
Okay.
Captain Mike, always there. All right. Anyone else from the amassed group here? Nothing to say today?
No, me, I have something.
Good night, okay. I'm sorry, Lee, I I wasn't. I got I was taking care of the multitude and then we'll take care of the the council and then why don't you go ahead and go first?
Um, I just wanted to mention that November 4th is an election day, and we do have a meeting scheduled that night. And I wanted the alderman to discuss or consider whether they wanted to potentially move that meeting.
I would be for moving it because I will have to be out of town that day anyway.
Okay. Um, we can't move it like a week later. We, one of the things that we talked about is potentially, so you'll be out of town just that day or that week?
Just that day.
Is maybe having um a meeting that Wednesday, maybe at 5:00 o'clock, if you guys would be available to um strictly have a finance meeting to discuss the 2026 budget.
Wednesday, the 5th and Thursday, the 6th is the LLA meeting in Baton Rouge. I'll be attending that.
So you wouldn't be back by 5:00?
Yeah, I won't be back.
You're not gonna take the webinar? They do it online, too.
We're going live.
You're going live? Okay. Well, do we wanna just push that meeting? To the.
And I'm gonna be out of the country.
That seems like a bad night for me.
So.
You're out of the country? Regan's not here? EJ, okay.
So what we could maybe do is have two members of the board discuss the 2026 budget um as long as they don't discuss it with any others, and then we would just start the discussion on, I believe it's November 18th, which is the third Thursday.
Could we just move the November meetings?
Well.
Thanksgiving's in the way.
Thanksgiving's in the way. That's why I was saying we would we could just eliminate the November 4th and resume on November 18th.
What about November 11th?
Well, then we'll have a meeting on November 11th and then on the 18th.
Yeah. Which one?
I thought that was 11th is the Tuesday.
11th.
Nope, it's Veterans Day.
If we wanna do the adoption of the 2026 budget in time to meet the deadline, we have to introduce the 2026 budget ordinance and set the public hearing on the November 18th meeting.
And how much notice do we have to give, Leann, publicly?
Um, not for the introduction, none.
For the passing of a budget. Three weeks?
Um.
Or two weeks?
10 days.
10 days.
Mm-hmm.
So the December, the schedule for the 20, for the budget amendments was the 18th would be the introduction of the ordinance, and then December 2nd would be the public hearing and hopefully the adoption of the budget. And then we have one other meeting. If we don't adopt it on the 2nd, then the meeting on the 16th would be our last opportunity to adopt the 2026 budget within the LLA guidelines.
So if we did November 18th, yeah, if we did November 18th and we needed to call a special meeting in between, we could, just for discussion purposes, if we still needed discussion, which more than likely we will, so um, you know, those are the kind of things that we could determine as we went forward in the process. But we would have three meetings available to us, um, November 18th and the two in December to get the budget passed.
What about having budget meetings during the day as we did last year?
We could do that.
I think it'd be a good idea to hold a special budget meeting during the day sometime, just because, you know, the evening meeting, sometimes we have other things we have to discuss, and it's hard to get into the nitty-gritty of it and sit at a table and look through figures when we're sitting up here at the podium.
Okay. So we could reach out and select a date for that. If you guys look at your schedules and let us know when you're available and.
Yeah, is it possible we could try to do one of those meetings like the week of the 11th?
Yes.
Okay.
Does anybody have any conflicts during, well.
Just the fifth and the sixth.
Alderman Tomplay, you have conflicts during the day because of your work schedule.
Yes.
Um. But, you know, it will be on YouTube, and if you had any questions, we could address those. I guess it would be. Would we? I guess we would video that, but we could get some information to you if you need it, but does anybody have any conflicts with that week during the day?
Or the week before. I just have a conflict the fifth and sixth.
Tentatively say the 10th or the 13th as possible dates? I don't know if other people. Just people up here.
That is a Tuesday?
Oh, we're closed the 10th?
On the 11th, it's Veterans Day.
What about the first week in November?
Wait, who cares if you close the 11th? We said the 10th or the 13th.
Right. Let's, we can shoot for the 13th. That's a Wednesday.
Yeah.
That's a Thursday.
Suggestion. I think we need to modify the agenda uh and then vote. I mean, the only people have the authority to to change the meetings are you guys.
No, we're just talking about having like a budget discussion, not a council, um, full-on council meeting.
Special council meeting. It's a it's an independent. Finance committee. More finance purposes.
What is it, the 3rd or the?
The 4th.
What's gonna happen on the 4th?
It'll be canceled.
Probably should take some action on that.
If we do it on the 13th.
We can't. We'd have to.
We need to have the whole day. This is.
Are you saying that they need to officially cancel the November 4th meeting?
Yeah. Let's look at our ordinance and see what our ordinance says about that.
I think the discussion is whether or not you actually need to cancel the November 4th meeting and have. Hold on a minute, Dina, please. Yeah. Okay.
Is November the 3rd, Monday the 3rd, an option for a budget meeting? Regan?
Um. Third? Potentially, uh.
Pat?
Yeah.
Pat, Monday the 3rd?
I will be out.
Uh, EJ?
What is it, November the 3rd?
November the 3rd.
Yeah, that's fine. That's a Monday.
I have some. I mean, I'm not open the whole day. It depends on when you wanna do that.
And then your 4th, you're out. Fifth and 6th, out. Friday's the 7th, so 10th, 13th, or 10th, 12th, where are you, the 12th?
What was wrong with the 13th?
No, I'm saying the 10th, 12th, or 13th is open.
12th, I'm committed to other things.
12th, so 10th or 13th? How's that look?
13th, but we need several hours. That day.
13th, I'm available.
Sounds like a lucky number.
You good, 13th? EJ, you good, 13th?
Yes.
Leann? The 13th, okay?
What time do y'all wanna start?
Oh, just sign that later.
To be determined. Now, as far as the meeting on the 3rd, did we, did we wanna just cancel that?
So that shall have to be by a vote of the board.
You mean by the 4th?
So you'd have to amend the agenda with a unanimous consent?
Tuesday, was it Tuesday the 4th?
To consider to cancel it and then vote to cancel it.
All right, you gotta change the vote and modify the agenda, right? We gotta modify the agenda?
Yeah.
Do I have a motion to modify the agenda?
I'll modify the agenda to discuss the cancellation of the town council meeting for November the 4th.
Second.
We have a first and a second?
Let's see if there's any.
Public comment?
Is the assembly gathered here have any questions on that? Seeing none? Uh, verbal vote or roll call?
To uh to, let's do a roll call to amend the modify the agenda.
All right, roll call to modify the agenda.
Alderman Bedrew?
Yay.
Alderman Contois?
Yay.
Alderman Patterson?
Yay.
Alderman Saucy?
Yay.
Alderman Tomplay?
Yay.
All in favor unanimously.
The it has been amended. Uh, now I'll entertain a motion to cancel the meeting on um the first Tuesday in November.
November the 4th.
November the 4th. We have a first?
Second.
Second.
Public.
Discussion from the assembly. Seeing none, uh, I will call for a vote. Do we need a verbal vote or a roll call? All right, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Motion passes.
Okay, for the special meeting, we we talked about the 3rd and the 13th. Did you guys come to a consensus on that?
I think everybody's available except Alderman Templay on the 13th, but he's not available during the day regardless.
Okay.
Except this Monday.
Um. The mayor or any alderman by written notice call a special meeting. The mayor, the notice must specify. So I might need to get you guys to sign a notice saying we calling this special meeting, it looks like. Edward, you wanna review this and see?
I think that's, I think that's true.
Yeah, we have to get served, yeah.
You can get served and all that stuff.
Well, they could sign it tonight.
Yeah.
Um, and you have to say what the subject of business is. Um.
Discussion of.
Need to be a vote, so I can just.
Discussion of 2026 budget.
So who wants to call the special meeting?
Leann. I will call the special meeting.
Excuse me, um. Leann, we didn't get served last year and we had two budget meetings.
No, that was for, that included the town.
Well.
They were open to the public, so why can't, why don't we just open this up to the public? And do it like we did before.
It is open to the public. It's called a special meeting. It's it's more like a, I guess it's more like a committee meeting.
Well, it's a special meeting, but you do have to, you you either have to sign uh saying you're okay with it or you have to be served with it.
Uh, yeah, we can just say that we're okay with it.
Just sign and say we're okay with it.
Okay.
I agreed to a special meeting on November 13th. We're all gonna send this.
Okay, I'm just gonna handwrite it.
She's writing it right now.
She's writing it right now.
Yeah, we weren't served last year for that. We just called.
Can't remember. Well, we were served. Yeah, we were, yeah.
That was a budget special meeting.
But we were served from that one.
No, but I'll talk about the budget meetings that we had during the day.
Yeah.
We didn't sign a piece of paper or serve it. We just called.
What time? On the 13th?
Can we say to be determined?
No.
Well, let's just make it up.
10:00 a.m.
10:00 a.m.
10?
10.
10:00 a.m.
Okay, we can adjourn and we can just get y'all to sign this after, right?
So is this note sufficient? I agree to attend a special meeting for the purposes of discussion of the 2026 operating. I agree to attend a special meeting for the purposes of discussion of the 2026 operating budget for the town of Abita Springs to be held at 10:00 a.m. at Abita Springs Town Hall?
That's close.
Okay.
You have to agree to call it, not to attend.
Yeah.
To agree that there is a meeting.
I agree to call a special meeting.
So we, we can just sign yours?
Everybody can sign yours.
Okay. All right, we're in the open section, Stuart. Yep, already.
See how things move along? We were sending the police out to look for you.
Oh, on November.
Let me take a little extra to, to address two subjects because one is, you'll notice I disappeared for a few moments when you, when you were shifting. That's because I wanted to go to the rec District 11 meeting. And it turned out when I got there and eventually found a likely room that they had changed it to yesterday and they had put a sign on the door. So, so since the subject of special meetings has come up, I'd like to say, please, please make sure everybody knows. The public knows and the public's well informed, so they don't all show up on the wrong day. Now, as to my, my open meeting comment, the rec District 11 is proposing at the next, it's going to be at the next election, a 20-year millage at the same high rate that they've been having for years, even though they've paid off their building. And it turns out that while they're holding the election because of the changing of the, the lines of, of what their district is and they want to get the, the new voters. But what they want the money for, it turns out, is to clear 22 acres that they have of woods. And what, it's wetland woods that they're going to have to supposedly mitigate and put in more soccer fields and the like. And that would, that's, that's almost as bad as another pud, not for the people, but because of the drainage. Woods are far better for runoff and preventing runoff and generally improving the, or generally avoiding the flooding that occurs. And 22 acres more, I mean, we really don't need that. And we certainly don't need it for them to just keep expanding there. It's, it's all very well if, if you live in Iowa or someplace, but we need our woods and swamps. And so I, and, and this, this one, it's not, it's not just one year, five years, it's 20 years. And we're already suffering by all of us taxpayers who are not enjoying the $25 X off or whatever because they don't do anything we do. I, I know I'm paying $159 a year just to get insulted from time to time. And I really, not only do I urge people to vote against this, but I urge the town to do what it can because I understand somehow the town is required to, to give some sort of permission over this as well. They've got, if they get by the core engineers, in our master plan we mentioned, we don't want mitigation that, supposed mitigation that's somewhere else because there's no place they can mitigate within our, our drainage. So it has, they'll have to try and mitigate. It'll be, they bought some swamp down by the comb or something. So I really urge the town council as well to do whatever they can to prevent all this from happening. Thank you.
That's on the November 4th? 15th?
The election is November 15th. I believe that'll be the only thing on the ballot for almost everybody in Abita. However, I've noticed I happen to be in precinct or, or associated a commissioner for AO3. The AO3 precinct, some of it may be in Fire District 7, which is also having an election. But I don't, I don't think that's any actual Abita people, but it's somewhere on the border there.
Thank you. Anyone for the council have anything to say?
Yeah, Stuart, I have a question. You're an election commissioner? So is there anything that Abita Springs citizens need to know that would be different in the documentation they need to bring in order to vote?
No, as, as a commissioner, I have not received any additional instructions. It'll just be the usual stuff, which is a photo ID. And for a state, state or parish election, you really need the photo ID. But we don't turn away anybody. We, we get them to, to fill out an affidavit of some sort. But basically, just show up and you'll be welcome. We generally get very poor turnout on something like a tax issue. And if this is a single tax issue, so it'll probably be even worse. And it really is important for, I mean, you're, you're voting for the next 20 years of your taxes. When I've run for things, you can't, you can be a commissioner and still have opinions, but you can't actually run at the same time. But I'm not running for this. But.
So people.
When I have run for something, the complaint that comes up, even though, even if I had been elected, I couldn't have done anything about it, is the real estate taxes are too high for many people. And this is how it happens. People vote for one little millage after another, or not so little millage, after another, and it all piles up. And they do it for 10 years, 20 years. And so you may never get to vote again on this particular millage.
So again, back to documentation, though, you haven't received any information that there's any validity to the fact that if some people's social security card don't match their current ID, if they've been married or divorced or whatever, there's no, no new instruction on any of that?
You, you should make sure that you're registered and you go-to-go vote. Make sure your register is in order. Registration is in order. And your, your home. I, I don't, I can't think of anything other than that. But you, you should try and get your driver's, if your name isn't on your driver's license, then that can be a problem. But we do.
Well, of course, your name is on your driver's license.
Well, no, not with married people.
That's not the question I'm asking.
When does this millage renew? I mean, end? Current millage?
Okay, the current millage actually won't end for several years. But they're having the election for new because they're changing their district lines. So the, the, the new people would not be paying the millage if, if they don't pass a new one.
And for the expansion, right? And for that expansion project?
Yeah, they, they've expanded the, 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 well, no, the, the expansion is separate. I mean, that's what they're going to plan to use the money for. But the reason for the election is the expansion of the district itself, which apparently now extends further north because the people up there voted against their millage for a rec district. And they said, no, we don't want all this extra tax. And so now they're trying to get it out of them another way by putting them in a new district.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So made.
We have a first? We have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Meeting is closed. First? Were you second? You was the second? No, EJ was the second.
What's up, Mikey?